I'll call the meeting to order. This is the North Manford Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council Meeting called to order at 7:05 PM. We'll start with a salute to the flag.
(inaudible)
Roll call, Michelle.
Mayor Viglione?
Yes, here.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano?
Here.
I apologize, I'm missing my... Here it is, okay. Sorry. Counselor Angeloni?
Yes, I'm here.
Counselor Diamond?
Here.
Counselor Duty?
Here.
Counselor Fawnin?
Here.
Counselor Goode?
Here.
Counselor Paternoster?
Here.
Counselor Pellicia?
Here.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes, previous meetings? January 7th, 2020, WPCA and Town Council minutes. Also, January 21st, 2020, Town Council meeting.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion for the first one, for January 7th, WPCA and Town Council minutes. I make a motion to approve that corrections have been made.
Second.
All right, motion is made by Counselor Angeloni and seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Viglione?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Duty?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Goode?
Yes.
Counselor Paternoster?
Same.
And Counselor Pellicia?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the January 21st, 2020, Town Council meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Duty and seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Viglione?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Duty?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Goode?
Yes.
Counselor Paternoster?
Yes.
And Counselor Pellicia?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add item 14A executive session under section 200-6A. It's for personnel appointment. Discussion on personnel appointment.
Any discussion? A second?
We need a second.
A second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? No. Roll call.
Mayor Viglione?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Duty?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Goode?
Yes.
Counselor Paternoster?
Yes.
Counselor Pellicia?
Yes.
All right, we'll move into Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Correspondence and citizen statements first. Next is unfinished business. Request to connect to Sanitary Sewers, Eight Notch Hill Road, map 3C, lot 18, Bill Miller's Castle.
Good evening. This item appeared before you back in November, just for a brief presentation, and at that time it was referred to the town of Branford Water Pollution Control Authority. The situation here is Bill Miller's Castle, they would like to connect to Sanitary Sewers, and the only sewers available are not directly in the town of Branford, they're in the town of Branford, they run along Route 1. What they would need to do is extend the sanitary sewer line on the north side of Route 1, easterly up to in front of the Bill Miller's Castle. That would be administered, that portion of it would be administered by the town of Branford. Then they can tie into the, because they're in the town of Branford, they would have to take a connection permit from the town of Branford, and we'd have to inspect their connection to that sanitary sewer system. It's somewhat of an unusual situation. Evergreen Woods is sort of the same situation, that's how the sewers got in Route 1 originally. Evergreen Woods is in the town of Branford, but it discharges directly to the town of Branford. But again, so it was referred to the town of Branford, they reported back favorably upon the proposed connection of Bill Miller's into the sanitary sewer line. There's a leather endear package regarding that. I had some subsequent discussions with the town engineer. The biggest thing, they want to make sure that they inspect the line in the town of Branford, because that falls under their purview, and they want to go over in terms of how we would meter and report that to the town of Branford. Basically, regarding the metering for the usage, we would get water authority records for how much water consumption they had, and they've requested that to get a deduction, they use a lot of irrigation water. We've done this in other places where we've actually let them submeter what goes in the irrigation system, and deduct that from the meter of water consumption, and then we bill them based upon that. We have a few situations in town that we've permitted that, where you have extensive water consumption that doesn't go into the sanitary sewer system. So basically, the other thing is, they'd be required to pay a special connection fee, computed at the amount of $42,000, based upon our current sewer assessment regulations. It's based upon the square footage, they've got a little over 15,000 square feet in the building, and that, again, computes to a $42,000 special connection fee. I have a suggested motion regarding that. One other thing they have to do, they've gotta pump the system, so they gotta put a pump station to service their site, because they're a restaurant facility, they have to put a grease trap in there. Those are all items that I would need to give final approval and inspection of when they do their construction. There is a suggestion motion, again, just to highlight some of the items, again, the $42,000 special connection fee, which will go into our capital fund for sewers. I put it in condition number four, that prior to issuance of a sewer connection permit, town of Branford shall receive verification from the town of Branford that the receiving sewer main in Branford has been satisfactorily constructed and is suitable to allow said connection. So we coordinate that with the town of Branford. And again, just going back to billing, in item number five, I have that said facility shall be billed for sanitary sewer usage based upon metered water consumption records provided by the regional water authority, less the amount of water utilized for irrigation purposes as verified by the town engineer based upon submetering of the water supply line to the irrigation system. Again, we've done that in the past. If they use a million gallons a year, they're built by the water authority, and their submetering that goes to irrigation is a couple hundred thousand gallons per year, then that they would get billed for is the 800,000 gallons per year. And then, in item number six, I did do a typo, there is a typo in there. I utilize another similar motion from the past. It should read, item number six, that the owner enter an agreement with the town authorizing the connection of the building to the sanitary sewers in Route 1 Branford, in general conformance with above reference conditions. I have a reference to Milltown Avenue. And if any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I'll move the suggested motion for Eight Notch Hill Road, as included in our package with the correction on item number six, as stated by the town engineer.
Second. Kurt, I just have a question in regards to the submetering.
Yep.
So who installs that and who makes sure that?
They install it.
There's no other, you know, that they're not trying to bypass any other things?
Yeah, I'd have to go look at the layout, I've done it in the past on other ones. We verify the location. I'd look at the plumbing and, again, annually we go and inspect it.
Okay.
It's worked in the past.
Okay.
All right, motion was made by Counselor Duty and seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Is there any other discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Viglione?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Duty?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Goode?
Yes.
Counselor Paternoster?
Yes.
Counselor Pellicia?
Next is new business, is there any? No new business. Next we have citizen statements and petitions. All right, we'll move into the regular Town Council meeting. Reports of committees, boards, and commissions. First is Economic Development Commission, Roger Salloway's monthly report.
So his monthly, they met last night, his monthly report is starting on page 43 in our tablet. This was a lot of what they discussed last night. The big thing that they have coming up is on February 18th, where it's the Advanced Manufacturing Cluster is going to be meeting, it's hosted at Honeywell Firelight. It starts at 7:30, and they are also going to visit Penn Globe and ESI, which is on Twin Lakes Road, I believe.
Yes.
Right, are the three companies that they're meeting. And Colin Cooper is the guest speaker for that event that they're having. The kickoff for the Sunflower Project is actually gonna be, is a kickoff tomorrow. They received a funding from the De Longo family, a donation, so they are doing the seeds again, the dwarf and the regular ones, the tall and the dwarf seed packets, which they will be putting together, and that's going to be kicked off tomorrow night at Town Hall at 6 o'clock. And then the rest of the items are in here that they talked about at their meeting last night.
Okay, next we have Parks and Rec.
Park and Rec met last Tuesday, and it was the first time they had a full commission in many, many months. And their biggest item on their agenda, the two big things are, one was their budget that they were discussing, which took a little bit longer because they were all relatively new at it, and they had just received their budget that night to go through and ask questions. And the other item was all of the open positions that we have in Park and Rec, which Mike will be addressing in executive session tonight. But as we all know, Sean, the director has put in his resignation, which is effective this Friday, and then Carrie got promoted, was moved up to Recreation Supervisor, that left her position open, which is the part-time person. The custodian also resigned, and we're still looking for Poco Fest. So there are a number of key positions that are open that Mike will be discussing later in executive session.
Okay, thank you. Next is Police Commission.
The Police Commission had a joint meeting with the Florida Commission on January 28th. There were a number of people, in fact, there were many Town Council members in attendance, or actually, there were about 26 people there. I think it was a very good meeting, and I know one of the major topics is coming up later on in the agenda, and since I was taking the minutes, I do have the motion that was made at that meeting, and shall share it then. And the next regular Police Commission meeting is next, Monday, the 10th.
Thank you. Next we have Fire Commission.
Just to echo, same thing, we were discussing the, at the joint meeting, the radio system, which is coming up later on in the agenda, so I'll leave it till then, and the next Fire Commission meeting is this Thursday.
All right, thank you. Next we have Board of Education and Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
No meeting.
No meeting. Next we have Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Planning and Zoning Commission.
Next meeting is Thursday.
Thank you. Next we have North Branford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
The Advisory Committee meeting is next Wednesday, the 12th. We will be working as a committee to come up with the reasons why not to renovate the facility and make a presentation along with the architect at the next Town Council meeting.
Thank you. Finance Subcommittee is next.
Our next meeting is going to be held prior to the February 18th Council meeting, and in the packets for Joe, Tom, and I at the desk, the Fire Department has submitted their proposal for their pension, which is the ongoing discussion. So that's going to be our topic of discussion at the February 18th meeting, and then we'll come back to the council.
Thank you, Rose. Next is Light Subcommittee. Okay, we'll move into the Town Manager's Report, Town Council Emails.
Yeah, this was brought out at a previous meeting, and I just wanted to give you the response there, that consultation with Dennis Pino, and we're looking at two options there that I've outlined in the memo, that you can have the old system, that's pretty cost-efficient at 225 a year, but it doesn't get you the email security encryption archival capabilities. So if you want that, then you've gotta go to the next higher level, and that'll be $2,160 a year to do that for all nine members to get on a town-designated email system. So it's possible, and we can do it, it's just your option in terms of how much the council wants us to spend doing that.
Well, I was the one that brought the suggestion up, but if you're not gonna have the security with it, I mean, I don't think we should spend the money for the upgraded system, but if you're not gonna have the security and the ability, archival capability, I don't see then why we should do it for the expense.
I think legally, and maybe Courtney, or Vinnie could explain it next meeting, but I think there should be, and I've seen it through the last, you know, couple legal issues that we had, is you do need some type of email system.
Oh yeah, I agree, but I hate to...
For council members, and you need something with capability to, you know, archive those in case a lawyer or somebody has to pull it up as to your discussion via email. So I think it'd be well worth the 2160 per year. So I would make a motion to go with the option that is archivable.
Well, I'll second it then.
Okay, motion was made by Counselor Duty, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion?
Yeah, could the motion be read by the recorder, please, so we know precisely what we're voting on? I could reword it if you want it.
Counselor Duty moved, seconded by Counselor Diamond, to approve the email, the town email plan to accommodate nine Town Council members to the town's email system at the cost of $2,160 per year for the new Office 360 email plan, which would include enhanced email security encryption and archival capabilities.
All right, thank you.
Could we get some legal advice on having a town email versus not having a town email?
So with respect to communications by council members regarding town business, that would constitute a public record whether or not using a public email system. So for the purposes of having a record that is sort of managed by the town where communications would exist and be archived, that, there's a benefit to that because there is kind of a central system where those records are being generated and kept.
Good, thank you.
Especially if you have to go through two and a half years of emails and try that, it's an unindated task.
Well, this talks about archival capabilities, does that mean that all emails are archived or not?
They are archived.
Okay, so it's not capability, they will be archived?
Correct.
Okay, any other discussion?
So, so how soon could this be put into effect?
We'll work on it tomorrow. I would say pretty quick, it's just a matter of paying for it.
Okay.
I'd say within a week, we should have it running.
So then, at that point in time, we'll have to make a transfer from contingency to cover the rest of this year on this.
Correct.
Okay, roll call, Michelle.
Mayor Viglione?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Duty?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Goode?
Yes.
Counselor Paternoster?
Yes.
Counselor Pellicia?
Yes.
All right, next is the update on 2020 Census.
I just wanted to update the council that I'm working on the, what's called the local committee, to make sure that we're not undercounted in the importance of the census, and that we're meeting with an official tomorrow from the Census, a field agent from the New York office, and I'm hoping to get some press out there and try to find some individuals to serve, and not that I know that we're undercounted, but I'd prefer that we have a committee working on that and getting in news and disseminating information on that, and hope that we can, you know, work with a local committee and get a few volunteers, and we'll put as much information out there as we can, it's fast approaching, so I just wanted to update the council, I'd be working on that.
Okay, you'll keep us informed?
Yes.
Okay. Next is update on work by QA and M for North Branford High School project.
Right, and also came up at a previous meeting to talk about getting the two councils, the council and the Board of Ed together, and the confirmation is that the Board of Ed is available on the 11th, figuring an off week would be better than trying to squish it in with a regular meeting. So they're available, and the council, I think I heard from Joe that is running late, and Lou, I don't believe can make it.
I can't, I can't make it either.
Neither can I.
I'm out of state.
Oh, okay.
For that week, so if we could just get another date. I'm out for a week, so. And I think, Ron?
Yeah, I'm out for a week as well. Rather than having them come back to us with one date, maybe they can give us a couple, just so that we can get everybody on board?
Yeah, we have, I mean, so the following week, we have our meeting on the 18th, again, there's no reason why you can't do it on the 18th, they were originally scheduled to have QA and M in for the 20th. So those are two dates. If you want to come start first on the 18th, and, or join them on the 20th, or...
Either date works for me.
Well, well, if we do the 18th, could we start it earlier?
Of course, yeah.
I mean, like at 6:30?
I won't be here the 18th.
Oh, you're not back on the 18th?
When do you come back, Ron?
The 18th, but we...
On the 18th, okay.
Well, the 20th is the Board of Education meeting, so that would, and they usually have some subcommittees prior...
Yeah, they have meetings before.
Prior to their board meeting. Can you look at the next week to see when, what they have?
Yeah, maybe the 25th, Tuesday?
Okay, push that out a week?
Well, it'd be two weeks for the...
What week? Yeah, for the 11th. Okay. Look at the 27th.
So what did, what did we come up with, the 25th, is that what?
Well, if that, may that work for them, then, maybe we should have another date.
Yeah, maybe, you know, if they're doing the, I don't know if the 19th works, but that would save them from a long meeting on the 20th, if they did it, if you did a joint meeting on the 19th.
19th works for me.
That's all right with me.
Not me, I can't do the 19th.
And you're gone as well, right?
I'll be back the 19th.
So let's see the following week, if he has either Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
You're talking the 27th or the 27? 25, 26, 27?
Right.
Okay.
What are they?
25, 26, 27.
25th, I'll be out, 26, 27, if I have to do it.
Okay.
You're a busy person.
I guess I gotta work.
Yeah, I can't do the evening of the 27th, I'm sorry. 26th does work.
26th for everybody?
Sorry with me.
On this end, okay. All right, we'll give it a shot.
Nothing's easy.
And if...
Bob, you're not going to the company for installation?
And it doesn't necessarily have to be at 7 o'clock, if it has to be a little bit earlier? That is fine. Not before 6, but 6 or 6:30 also works.
Do you still think we should have another day, just in case that's not gonna work? Maybe that our next Town Council meeting, the 3rd, maybe at 6, if that 26th doesn't work? I mean, I just think we should have two dates to give them.
Let's shoot for the 25th, since nobody objected to that.
I did.
Or 26th, I'm sorry. That nobody seemed to have a problem with, and see if they can fit that in then. Because I have a number of problems after that.
Okay. Next is a letter from the Connecticut DOT regarding construction and roundabout of Route 1 and Route 22 sidewalks.
Yeah, that's a more informational, Kurt and I are working on that, Curtis is talking with the state and with Guilford, is also involved in this. Look, the issue is, you know, the commitment to sidewalk, or the maintenance of sidewalk and what this agreement is for the state, so nothing you need to take action on right now, we're gonna continue to work behind the scenes to figure out if there's any kind of wiggle room with respect to this, the way they've laid out in terms, and I'd like to have Vin take a look at it as well when it gets back next week, so.
I guess the issue I have with sidewalks in that particular, it's like, where are you walking to? There's really nothing around there.
Nothing that it connects to, right? It's just sort of...
Right, and if it's to the businesses that go into Branford going down Route 1 away from us, or you got Tractor Supply and Country Farm Market the other way, which are both not in our town, so Branford and Guilford.
If I could add, Guilford is sort of supporting of sidewalks, they want to get sidewalks further down Route 1. Our section, through the roundabout, all it does is get a pedestrian through the roundabout, it tries to get them there somewhat safely, but you're right, it really goes nowhere, and it's part of the project, it doesn't really help pedestrians in general, other than getting right through that location.
At some point in time, they're gonna be sidewalks to nowhere, because they're gonna just end.
They're only to get, right now, they're only to get through the roundabout, and then people would have to walk on the street.
I could, I could see the sidewalk on the North Branford side, which'll be from Bill Miller's, you know, maybe up towards the Farm Market, you know? But the other two, I can't, I can't foresee on that side, there's just, woods in a steep bank.
They're maintained by...
The other ones are all ma- they're maintained by Guilford. It's, it's only in front of Bill Miller's that would be falling under North Branford's purview, and, and our ordinance requires the abutting property owner to, to maintain it. I just wanna make sure Bill Miller's, you know, I haven't talked to Bill Miller's, just to make sure that they're aware of it, and I did wanna just check with Guilford. I did hear Guilford signed their agreement, because again, they're looking, they wanted to get sidewalks further in towards Guilford, they have to maintain the planted island and, and the roundabout, I think there was a little more communication with them regarding the whole matter. And I'd like to run it by Vin, Vin's office, just to make sure that, you know, there are master agreement, we're not exposing ourselves to anything. It's not something that I see Public Works maintaining, it's nicely a little, you know, little stretch of sidewalk that, it's not like in the center of North Branford, near the Old Town Hall, but there's town property associated with it.
I, I think if Guilford's looking to extend their sidewalks and North Branford can put a sidewalk in on their side, I'd love, I'd rather see that. I wish they did sidewalks on Route 80 in North Branford.
Yep.
You know, which was one of the biggest mistakes that this town ever made, not having sidewalks.
They were looking to, that's not right.
From all the way from near the North Branford barber shop all the way up through the center, you know, it should've been a sidewalk in there, but...
Okay, but the plan's to have...
Short sighted town at that point.
Have a little more information and then you can act on it at the next meeting.
Not that they're gonna care what our opinion is, but what's the purpose of this thing? This is actually enhance safety, or is this like make busy work for the DOT because they got nothing else to do?
The roundabout as a whole, or the sidewalk?
Yeah, what's the roundabout for?
The roundabout is, it's an intersection with enough accident history that they investigated what to do there, they looked at putting a light there, um...
There's a novel idea, wouldn't that enhance safety?
Pardon?
Never mind, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so they looked at a, a light and they looked at the roundabout, and they, their recommendation was to do a roundabout, they thought it would be less detrimental.
The few that exist going out Route 80, I find that the most confusing things imaginable to drive through. I, I can't see this enhancing safety.
Well, they, I mean, the traffic keeps moving, that's the whole idea, that the traffic always...
This, these are new designs, so this is completely different than the one up on Route 80.
So this'll be less confusing.
This'll be less confusing.
See, it's still a circle.
This'll be con- it'll calm traffic, Joe, it'll calm traffic.
This is like giving grade school kids crayons and tell them to color something because they're gonna read out a thing to teach.
The states, uh, they're putting them all over the state, there's, there's one up at, if you go to Bradley, they put one up there.
Oh, boy, I could hardly wait.
I mean, they're all over the place.
I will, I will say, I'm glad they're doing something because anybody who's been stuck on 22 heading out towards Route One at rush hour, I mean...
Even on a good day.
I got stuck there for probably a good thirty, if not forty minutes one night.
Yep.
Hence, a traffic light would work.
There's maintenance associated with that.
Joe, that's the old fashioned way, Joe.
Yeah. I, I am a dinosaur, I'm sorry.
Okay, next is community events and presentations. We have the presentation of annual auditor from FY ending June 30th, 2019 by Darren Offidol of A&amp;O and Company LLC, formerly MAWC LLC.
There were scanned versions of the audit out in the Dropbox, so the last week, you have hard copies at your desk, the audit and the State Single Audit Act, the smaller book, as well as in your packet, you have a two-page management letter, front and back, and Darren is here, I just wanna go over my memo quickly first and then bring him up to just questions and talk about the management letter. Key points are that it was another successful year on a budgetary basis and GAAP basis, we had an increase of our fund balance, our undesignated, unassigned fund balance is about eight point five three eight million, still exceeding our 10% goal, we're about 15.8%, so that allows us some more flexibility as we work on the 2021 budget. There were some increases in the amount that the council put towards capital this current year, and again, it's reflected on page 26. Some of the big numbers that resulted in the savings, there were some additional tax collections greater than the budget, again, on page 485,000, ahead of the projection. There were some significant savings, a couple hundred thousand dollars on the medical insurance when we kicked in with the state and the Teamsters Plan versus the Anthem Plan, Public Works, $152,000 combined, all of those three or four departments over there, again, the result of a relatively mild winter. The other income above, 300, I'm on page 26, 318,000 above budget, there were some legal settlements that came in, so all in all, it was favorable year. The Single Audit Act, again, as Darren will go over, clean health, no reportable differences or conditions. The management letter, again, there's some items on there that are, are very noteworthy that I'll let Darren go over, but rest assured, we are, as a meeting planned for this Friday, Friday or Thursday, myself and staff accountant, to go to the Board of Education and meet with the new team up there to try to address some of these issues and resolve them. So I'll bring Darren up, the auditor, to address any questions you have.
Good evening. I could just take a couple of minutes just to go through some auditor communications, I'll take any questions you may have. As Anthony mentioned, we issued unmodified opinions on both your financial statements and your state single audit, those are the opinions you want from your auditors. We had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies found this year in the audit, which is good. We do have some suggestions for improvement over internal controls, which I will point out here in just a few minutes in the management letter. So, from an audit perspective, I think things went very well, we were able to obtain all the information that we needed to obtain, that we asked for, on a timely basis, and issue the report. So, we were satisfied from an audit perspective that, that things were as we would've expected. As Anthony mentioned and I just mentioned, there were some internal control comments that we had, these were not material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, just suggestions, and there should be a two-page letter in front of you, just kinda outlining what these are, won't read them in detail, but I'll just go over them briefly. I do think there, it's important enough to note that, you know, if these types of comments, although they didn't rise to that significant deficiency or material weakness level, if they continue on, they certainly could. The first one is, it's very common for towns and cities to reconcile between the Board of Ed and, and the town itself, the general ledger, when you have multiple general ledgers within a town, which is what you guys have. That reconciliation occurs on occasion, it doesn't occur monthly as it should, and so our recommenda- recommendation is that that reconciliation occur every month so, so that you can ensure that, you know, if there are any, if there is anything to find, that it would be pointed out during that reconciliation. There were also some issues with the recording of accounts payable out at the Board of Ed, it did not turn out to be material, and so it didn't rise to that level, but it is an issue and it needs to, we need to make sure we address that going forward. Then the third one is the town and the Board of Ed encumbrance system, it's, they, they work together, we need to make sure that the encumbrances, and this really ties into purchasing and everything, of course, we need to just make sure that encumbrances are relieved at a, you know, on a timely basis, encumbrances aren't meant to stay out there for a long period of time, they're meant to be a very short period accrual in essence that affects your budget and, and, and future year general ledgers. And so we need to make sure that the recording of those occur on a timely basis so that there are no adjustments to it during the audit. We had no adjustments this year, any material or, or significant adjustments, let me put it that way, there were some minor adjustments that just rose to the concern of, let me mention it to you guys, and that's where we're at. So those three comments, I felt, were worthy of bringing up. Anthony already went through all the fund balances, which I think is a, you know, you guys are very strong from a fund balance standpoint, things were clean, as I already mentioned, from an audit perspective, and I do think that your internal controls in general, although they can be strengthened, I think you have adequate internal controls, and if you continue to work on those internal controls, they'll just get better. Any questions?
So is this your second year?
This is our second year, yes.
Okay, so these, the three things that you noted on here, were, I don't remember, were these issues last year also, or did they just come up this year?
So, two of them were verbal recommendations last year to management, they didn't rise to this level yet, as an auditor, we kinda go up depending on the materiality of them.
So what were the, do you remember?
The two last year was the reconciliation between the town and the Board of Ed.
Okay.
And the encumbrances.
Okay, so they, so you talked to both sides about those last year, and now it's in writing to us?
Yes.
Is that it? Okay.
I have one question.
Yes.
You do this for other towns too?
I do, yes.
Do other towns, on somewhat of a regular basis, do a deeper, more in-depth audit? Like, say, every five years or anything like that, or is this the standard audit every year, all the time?
So this is your standard financial audit, it's also, if you're required to, it's also an audit of your, your state or federal funds, in your case, this year, state funds, because that's what you're required to have. It doesn't get any deeper unless you want to, as a town, really dive into more like an internal control type, type of audit, which is a much different audit, it's not a financial audit, so this is about as deep as a financial audit goes.
Right, do other towns do that, other type of audit, on any sort of regular basis?
Not on a regular basis.
Okay.
Issues are found, sometimes they, they may choose to do that.
So there's a couple levels, what's a forensic audit?
Well, that typically means that something's occurred and there's some research into...
So that's a higher level audit?
That's research into trying to figure out exactly what happened. Usually when you hear, hear that terminology, somebody's concerned that some, there's been theft.
So then, that's, that's the highest level?
Uh, yeah, they're, they're not really different levels.
Okay.
As much as they are different types.
That's more of a targeted type audit, is what you're saying?
Exactly.
For specific concern?
It's usually looking at specific areas, you know, it could be, if you're worried about expenditures in one specific area of your town, you know, you look at that specific area. Gets a lot more in, in depth than what a typical financial statement audit does. However, it generally doesn't occur, like I mentioned, unless there's a concern that, that something's going on that shouldn't go on.
Thank you.
How likely is this type of an audit to catch something like that before somebody had a concern?
Because of the internal controls that you have in place, I would say very likely. When a town doesn't have internal controls in place, it gets much tougher for an audit like this to catch those types of things, and that's why you would have multiple material weaknesses if you didn't have internal controls in place, and why auditors nowadays, you see it a lot more than you used to, but why auditors are, you know, not, not shy to give those comments, because there are always possibilities, and if your internal controls are not appropriate, you'll get the comments.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next we have citizen statements and petitions and correspondence.
Good evening, my name is Dottie Sabastano, 43 Sunnyside Drive, Northford, Connecticut, and I'm here as president of the Totoka Historical Society, once again. I am in this budget cycle, I am once again requesting a town sign for the Totoka Historical Society. We need to designate this location, at least as other towns do with the proper signage, to promote the days and times of the museum, which is the Reynolds Spears House, also on the National Register, and the barn, and the white gas station, and also to, this coincide with the promotion of North Branford as a cultural and historical designation. To that end, we are working with EDC and looking to expand that campus designation, which is right across from the Atwater Library, for those of you who don't know, it's there because there's not a sign. We are looking to eventually move the Little Red Schoolhouse from the Northford side of town to the same campus, which would expand that historic district, which also includes going down North Street with a lot of historical houses as well. Uh, you know, North Branford, the town, and, and we, all the volunteers that maintain the, the house and the barn and have it open for the public with, you have to go to the website to see when we're open, but we maintain that property, and I know the town is aspiring to create more of a historical and cult- and cultural destination, so to that end, I would appeal once again to you to let us have a sign that would tell us what's there, what we have to offer, the times that the, the buildings are open, and the events that coincide with all the historical things that we do there. You know, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, and, thank you.
Mike, how much is it to have Carrie work with the Historical Society to develop a town sign?
You know, we can do that there, I think there might even be some funds left that we might be able to squeeze from, from that. I'll go back, I'll talk with Carrie about the sign program, see if we can get that in.
I'll just get together with the Historical Society.
Something like, the question was, is just that Council of Duty asked the town manager how much a sign would cost.
No, no.
So, so they are, there are some funds that we had available to do the signs that we've done around town, and there's still money in the account, so we would like, I guess, we'll just say the council would like you to talk to Carrie DeKes and work with her and with the Historical Society to come up with a variation, you know, give us some options and cost.
We just want the signs to look the same as the regular town signs, so...
I wanted the one, I've already, you know, looked into it, and I wanted the one that has the ability to put in...
Right.
Times and, and events and so on.
One similar to Northford Center. Has the ability.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Bill, Bill, I have a question for you, is that your wife?
Yes.
We need a town historian, we don't have anybody.
A historian, you got Ted Groom, isn't he?
Nobody's in the position now, as far as I know.
Are you looking at me or are you looking at my wife?
I'm looking, I'm looking at her.
It might be a package deal.
You can both do it, yeah, that'd be fine. I'm just throwing it out there in case you're interested.
He's a historian from the 1990s.
Okay.
That's what you get. Just a couple of quick things, social media Sunday exploded with the congratulations for your dispatcher that was retiring out of the police department, it was really nice and, and again, North Branford's good for that, they get behind their people. And last week, at the Park and Rec meeting, which I attended, it was nice to see they got a full complement and commission again, but anyway, halfway through the meeting, all of a sudden, there was a medical emergency in one of the rooms. It just so happened, out of 12 people in the room, including the commission, there was five first responders, so the person had good, good attention right away, but again, you know, we don't say enough for a first responder, so, get a chance to do it, let it do it. Anybody, you'll be talking about the, the council format tonight, a little later, and I think the, the consent agenda is a good idea to include the, the tax refunds, the appointment commissions, the simple ones, and even possibly the roll call vote, you've talked about that. But, I think the boards and commissions should be, uh, talked about every week, or at least the reports talked about every week, especially now, you're going into budget season, there's a lot going on with, with the high school and the police department, I would say, I know you wanted to put it back to one, or considered doing one, I'd say leave it at two. More importantly, though, the citizen statements, it seems like you wanna cut them down to a... to one. Bad idea, please don't do that. And don't cut the time down. I understand those were suggestions, not, I don't, I'm not pointing anything at anybody, but please don't mess with the time or the amount of citizen statements. I watch other town meetings around town, and, believe me, some people get up there and really redundant, and they let them go on. I don't know how they do that. You know, a few years ago, there was a propane issue, we had a few big meetings, and there was a time where, as far as the minutes, or how long the people could speak, they set a rule that evening. They, they knew there was going to be a lot of speakers, they had a list, they put their name on a list, they set the rules for the evening. You can always do that, you know. Just don't let word get around, they're cutting the minutes down. And reference to the, to the agenda itself, you were nice enough two years ago to put the agenda packet online, you know, with the, when you put the agenda up for the evening. But you know, it doesn't say it on here, meaning the agenda, where it says it's in the clerk's office and the two libraries, just a little thing. Put it on here, so everybody knows that they can go online, maybe they don't. But, and just as a, as a, as a note, Mike, the agendas for the, like, next council meeting is not posted. I thought, once the dates were picked out for the year, they all go on the calendar? But the calendar is empty, as far as the, a lot of, a lot of commissions around here, but the planning and zoning and town council are not listed on that calendar. And again, I'll say it again, I've said it before, there's two or three meetings that still need, should be videotaped. You got a budget season coming up, if it needs to go into the budget, please do it. I think that'll, that'll help all around.
That's a, that's not a paid position, it's a volunteer, volunteer for...
For filming?
Totoka TV. So we can't, we can't hire somebody to do that. They volunteer to come and record our meetings.
Talk to them about volunteering to do the, I think it's important for us, I mean...
What I'm saying.
I think it would have saved, going back a few months, when you had the big problem with the parking wreck and had to do an investigation, I think, how was that that meeting? I'm not saying one way or another. But if you saw, if you had in your investigation, if you saw the, the tape, you would have formed an opinion from that. Anyway, just a thought. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
George Miller Dogwood wrote, "I also wanted to speak about the proposal to limit citizen statements to two minutes." Just historically, the council, six years ago, put that into effect during the propane investigation, to limit the input from citizens. And it was put down to two minutes. Four years ago, the council sitting at that time voted to rescind that two-minute limitation. And in the four years that have passed, I don't think any of you can find any, any incident where anyone droned on so long at the microphone, that it was a problem. It's the opportunity for citizens to speak. They generally come contemporaneous to a issue in town, and this is their opportunity to speak, your opportunity to find out what's on the minds of citizens, so therefore, it's probably helpful. And I don't think you should be putting that as a limit. I think two minutes is possibly a little, a little short. Five minutes, I don't think anybody reaches, and I certainly don't think it's been a problem for you, although I do congratulate you for looking to streamline the program. Thank you.
Hi, Donna Persley, Marjorie Drive, and I had comments about the new rules and procedures for the streamlining the town council meetings. Regarding the appointments, it takes about two minutes, so I don't see how that'd be a problem. Now, sometimes when there's an appointment, or most of the time, everybody says yes, 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 yes. But every once in a while, there's somebody that has an issue with someone. And how would that be addressed if there was going to be a no for something?
That would, that would be taking, taken out of the consent agenda. That would be taken out. Someone, someone would say, I don't agree with that, or I object to that. That would be taken out of the agenda, and we put to the side and talked about, probably after the other, the other appointments were done, reappointments. And, and then, that would, that would be discussed, that would be a different kind of vote. This is just for the votes that everybody here agrees on and knows what's going on, and who's getting appointed or reappointed, and everyone agrees to it. It's just a matter of saying, does everybody, anybody object? And if nobody objects, then, then they're all yes votes.
You don't discuss before you have...
That's the way it's done, but if somebody...
No, it's done at that time.
Right.
Yeah.
So if any, if anyone objected to anything under, anything on the consent agenda, you, it would just get taken out, and it would go under new business on the same agenda.
All right.
Yeah, we, we want people to be able to talk.
Yeah, you want, just, I mean, just in case somebody on the board knows of something.
Right, we're still afforded that ability to do that.
And about the meetings being, the commissions are giving the reports every single town council meeting. Now, most commissions only meet once a month, so if there's nothing to report, you just say nothing to report. Now, the planning and zoning meets twice a month, just like town council. So there should be a report for planning and zoning every single meeting, and there should be something that happened at planning and zoning before the town council, because they're the second most important commission in this town, and the town council should be aware of what's going on in planning and zoning, so you know what's going on in this town. And for there not to be a report every town council meeting, I think you're missing out on what's going on.
Well, the reports are given by the liaisons, and liaisons might not necessarily be able to make every meeting.
Right.
And that's, the role of the liaison is, if you can make the meeting, fine, but you're not forced to go to the, to the meeting. And with planning and zoning meeting twice a month, if the liaison can't go, there may not be a report, because not, no one else was there.
Right, but then they don't say nothing to report, but there should be an opportunity for planning and zoning to give a report every town council meeting.
Right, and I, I understand the concern, but there wasn't, like, for instance, this particular meeting, there wasn't a planning and zoning between the two meetings. The next meeting's actually this week, so...
Yeah, they usually happen on Thursday afternoon.
Excuse me, the liaison can also petition the mayor to have, if there's specific concerns, can petition the mayor to have it put on the agenda if they have something to say to it.
Well, it's just different things that go on in planning and zoning, you know, different buildings going on, or whatever that, you know, farm events, whatever's going on in...
Well, I would never, not, not want to hear that. I, I think the whole council feels the same way. If, if we had to bring it up for one meeting, I think we talked about the, the second meeting of the month, bringing the commissions up and going through all that, but the first meeting of the month, a lot of times, there's no, there's no meetings. So, so we, we would just think you're talking about getting rid of that first, first meeting of the month, getting rid of all those things, everybody sits here and says, no meeting, no meeting, no meeting. And, and just bring it all to the second meeting, because most of, most of the commissions and stuff have, have talked already, and there was stuff, there would be stuff to bring back here. We certainly want to know what, what's going on everywhere.
Well, that would be fine with most of the meetings, but I think planning and zoning should still be at both town council meetings, because they do meet twice a month.
Okay.
And if you hear something, you know, three weeks after it happened, then that may be too late for the town council to have an objection, or, you know, find out more information. And again, I think the public should speak for more than a few minutes. I think five minutes is fine. When you are actually trying to tell the public they can't speak for five minutes, you're saying that you don't want to hear what they have to say. And I think it's a bad thing to say to the residents of this town that we don't value what you have to say, and that we're going to shorten the amount of time that you actually get to talk to us.
I personally want to hear what you have to say, what everybody has to say. Let me ask the town attorney something, or attorney. If, if we were to not, not put a time limit on people talking, we got some people that want to talk for a long time, if it gets out of control, am I able to stop them? Maybe that's it enough.
So, it's a, it's a good question. I think I would have to go back and look at the specifics of that, of whether or not if you have no limit, if you can then cut someone off ordinarily, although...
I mean, if it's done on purpose, I, I want to hear what everybody has to say, and I don't care how long it takes, really, but if something like that were done on purpose, and we were watching somebody talk for 45 minutes, and...
Right, right, if someone got up and essentially took advantage to kind of, you know, maybe just take over the meeting, which would not be the ordinary course. I, I would have to look at that. I think the, the general rule is that it's not required to have public comment at a meeting, but certainly it's valuable to do that.
Right.
And so when you open it up and you create an opportunity, it can also be valuable to have some limit, so that everyone who may want to speak has that opportunity. And that's, that's sort of the tension between, you know, the opportunity to speak and then also having a limit. It's not to shut people down, it's to ensure that there's an opportunity for multiple people to be heard, and also maintain the efficiency of meetings.
Okay. What's the, what's the... I'm sorry, Jim.
Why don't we leave it at the discretion of the chair, the option of the entire council overriding the chair cutting somebody off, if the majority of the council felt it was appropriate to allow this figure to continue?
I think that's how it works.
Well, right now, the way, the, right now, the way we have it in what's this called here, the rules of procedure for the town council does have a five-minute limit, with the stipulation that we can vote at specific meetings to change that if we wish. So if there was a big, if there was a big turnout for something, and we wanted to, for that particular meeting, say it's going to be a three-minute limit, because there's so many people there, we would have that option to do that. That's the way the rule is written right now, so...
I, I would rather have a set time, three minutes, five minutes, whatever, and be able to say, all right, your time is up, that to try to hit the gavel and, and create a contentious interaction with cutting somebody off when they don't want to be cut off, it, it's much easier that if we have a three-minute limit, and the person's not done, we say, that's okay, we'll allow you some extra time, because we have a good conversation going on. I think it's a better interaction to give somebody a little extra time to explain themselves than it is to try to cut somebody off in the middle of speaking.
Yeah, I think the speaker can always come back. I think after everybody else speaks, like, you would get up and speak, and then everybody else would get up and speak, right? You're able to come back again, I think, is the way it works.
And I would have to check that, but that would be inappropriate way, so I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have that answer right now.
What's the standard, as far as other town councils and stuff like that?
I mean, it, again, the, the basic rule is that it's not required to have public comment, but so when you open it up, you know, somewhere between two to five minutes is, is pretty reasonable. Again, in part, and to your point, the idea is to make that opportunity available on an equal basis. And so having a, a sort of a time limit is something that can then be enforced across the board, and there's not, you know, sort of favoritism being shown.
I've been on the council a long time, Joe's been on the council a long time, George was on with us quite a while. I'm not a fan of time limits. I don't feel there's any need for time limits in the last four years, since we removed the time limit, nobody's violated it. I think the town people have a right to speak, and I think they should be heard. So I would be voting against that, any time limit that I see on there.
I tend to agree with Mike. I, I've been here a lot of years, and I, I frankly would have to think long and hard about the number of times I've thought somebody was abusing the opportunity to make public comment. So I'd be adverse to really limiting members of the public from speaking their mind as long as they need.
I want to hear people talk, too, on the way you have to say.
That's why, I, I think that with the town council meetings, I think the problem that you actually would see is there's not that many people here to talk anyway. So I think there's no really reason to have any kind of time limit, but five minutes is probably reasonable, and if they want to talk longer, if you felt that it was helpful, then they could. I mean, it's, but I think the three minutes is just, two minutes, whatever it was, was just really too, too short. And I think the other thing was a form. They wanted to make the forum five people instead of six, so I think they should keep it at six, to keep a better representation of the members of the council. Because if you're going to make a decision on something, you really need to have six people instead of five, that's more like a two-thirds. That's it.
Thank you. Okay. Everybody all set? Next, we have resignations and appointments. The first one is appointment of Dan Arman to Economic Development Commission, term to expire 12/31/21.
I'll move that.
Excuse me, I think that is supposed to be alternate.
That is an alternate.
It's an alternate.
He is an alternate.
And I know I called it in that way, it's an alternate.
Okay. I'm sorry, all, all...
I amend the motion to reappoint Dan Arman as an alternate to the EDC, with a term to expire 12/31/21.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion was made by...
Joe.
Joe, seconded by Lou. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Viglione?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Duddy?
Yes.
Council Fawnen?
Yes.
Council Goad?
Yes.
Council Pattenoster?
Yes.
Council Plicia?
Yes.
And next is a reappointment of Carl Belbusti to the Ethics Committee, term to expire 12/31/22.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion made, made by Council Angeloni, seconded by Council Fawnen. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Viglione?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Duddy?
Yes.
Council Fawnen?
Yes.
Council Goad?
Yes.
Council Pattenoster?
Yes.
Council Plicia?
Yes.
Next, we have the reappointment of Cherie Dolan to the Ethics Committee, term to expire 12/31/22.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Council Angeloni, seconded by Council Fawn, Fawnen. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Viglione?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Duddy?
Yes.
Council Fawnen?
Yes.
Council Goad?
Yes.
Council Pattenoster?
Yes.
Council Plicia?
Yes.
All right, next we have unfinished business, discussion in action, future budget planning initiative.
No items.
Next is town council agenda format.
I'd like to table that. I have some changes, but I forgot them, so I need a little bit of time left.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made by, by Council Duddy, and seconded by Council Angeloni. Roll call, any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Viglione?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Duddy?
Yes.
Council Fawnen?
Yes.
Council Goad?
Yes.
Council Pattenoster?
Yes.
Council Plicia?
Yes.
Next, we have CO, COG resolution.
Yeah, this is the item that was carried over last time, last meeting, just to get confirmation from the school side, board of ed, on the two grants, most notably the second one for the waste diversion in the school. A school will have to participate. The superintendent has responded favorably that they'd like to participate both in the cybersecurity program and also the waste diversion program as well. So it's a favorable report back from them, and I would hope to have your support for this, for these two grant proposals.
I have a question about the cybersecurity. Regardless of getting the grant or not, there will be a survey of the cybersecurity of each one of the towns, because that's what it says, it happens from January to March. So that will happen as part of the application for the grant? Because if the grant doesn't even do it, until the 20th, the application's until 20th of February, assuming that is part of what you have to do to apply? Every town will be, it says, survey of each municipality's cybersecurity from January to March.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we're doing anything on our end, it's just in the hands of the council of governments to submit the application to the state for funding, and then we'll... to submit the application to the state for funding, and then we'll participate in that process. When I, I understand it that they'll go out for a consultant or firm to bring in then to work with the, with the towns, and I'm hoping we get a, an assessment of, of our capabilities with respect to security defenses. But I don't think we have to do anything on our end.
Yeah, but I mean, just because it says, you know, from January to March, if the application is due till February twenty-eighth, is that something you have to do in preparation for receiving the grant?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that town council adopts a resolution endorsing the South Central Regional Council of Governments Regional Performance Incentive Program, Proposals for Regional Cybersecurity Initiative and School Waste Diversion Pilot Program, and authorizes SCROG for apply for funding under RPIP, and further authorizes SCROG to enter into any required contract and/or agreement should the proposals be selected for an RPIP award. All as referenced in Connecticut General Statute, Section four dash one twenty-four S. Such proposals are attached to and made part of this record.
Second.
Motion, motion was made by Council Angeloni and seconded by Council Duddy. Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Viglione?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Duddy?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Goad?
Yes.
Council Paternoster?
Yes.
Council Plicia?
Yes.
Next is new business discussion in action, town council budget session schedule for year two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one.
Well, my first question is, the date Tuesday is March tenth, not the eleventh. I mean, I, I, those dates are not correct. I looked at the calendar twice to check.
Well, my third is, is Tuesday, so seven days would be the tenth, not the eleventh.
Right.
I think that's the only date that's, well, the twenty-fifth would not be. Yeah, so it's the third, the tenth, the seventeenth, the twenty-fourth, so.
I, do, did we combine some of these budget sessions with our regular meetings in the past? Or we just?
No, no, we usually had three, three and three in any of the departments.
Right, three and three, and then if there are other departments that you want to hear from.
Came to a council meeting.
Right.
Well, if there's any that you know you're going to miss, and if you want that, here that department, we can always move the departments around, it doesn't.
I can't go to the, I can't make the tenth, and I would like to be there for that one, if we can move them around.
Yeah, that's why I'm, I'm going to be away the tenth.
I'll be away the tenth.
And we can, we can move that, those to a different night. Will you be around on the twenty-fifth if we just block those?
Will that be the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth, yeah.
I would prefer that.
Meaning do all six of them that night?
No, if we put Board of Ed, Library and Parks and Rec on the tenth, and did Police, Fire, Public Works on the twenty-fourth.
I would certainly be in favor of that.
Yeah, I prefer that.
Anybody else okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
Based on, on what Marie and, well, based on what the three of us said down here, are there going to be a quorum issue on the tenth? Are all six of you guys available and are going to be here the night of the tenth?
Do we, do we think that's wise to have that on the, on the tenth of all, all three?
So all three of you cannot make the tenth?
Right.
Oh, okay.
We shouldn't have any, anything on the tenth.
Well, there is a, there is a fifth Tuesday in March, so that if we, our, our regular meetings are the third and the seventeenth, so if we didn't meet on the tenth, we could do the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first with those six departments, if that works.
That would work for me, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll take out Tuesday, March tenth, and we'll just move that group to March thirty-first?
Any motion to change that?
Well, well, we have to approve this, but before we approve it, I just have a, because the next one is Department Heads. And I just didn't know, because they have some different dates than what we do. They have budget workshops on April first and second, which aren't even listed on our agenda. So I didn't know what those are. Are those during the day with you, Mike?
Uh, no, I think we've got, um, a.
Because why would you have those before the public hearing?
No, I'm not sure why, why that's in there. We're going to, I'm started that process already, we'll conclude before we get to the.
And, and some of those dates are incorrect too, there's the other.
Well, yeah, they use the same dates as the other one. So when we change one, we'll change the other. But that first and second should probably just be deleted totally, because we don't even have anything scheduled for those dates.
And then also remove March tenth?
And?
And then add March thirty-first?
And, right. We're going to move, we're going to move the group on the tenth down to the thirty-first.
I have that up here.
Okay.
Down here, is it going to follow suit?
Yeah, so on the, Department Heads, the changes that we make on the Town Council ones?
Right.
That will follow through to the Department Heads. So we're deleting March tenth, and we're going to add March thirty-first.
And then change from the third to the twenty-fourth, thirty-first of March.
Um, well, what is on March tenth, on here it says March eleventh, but it's really March tenth. That group is going to be?
This could be on the thirty-first.
On the thirty-first. But then also on the Department Heads, it says budget workshop dates, Tuesday and Wednesday, the seventh and eighth, but on the Town Council, it has the eighth and the ninth. Because we generally don't do budget deliberations on the same night as the public hearing.
Right, that would be on?
So, so.
Department Head would be eight and nine.
Correct.
Yeah, public hearings is.
If the public hearing is on the seventh, the first Tuesday.
Right, and restrict it to the presentation and then the public comment.
Correct. So then on the Department Head schedule?
Yeah, it would be eight and nine.
It would be eight and nine, not seven and eight.
And then May twelfth and nineteenth are still accurate?
Yeah, those would, that's, I think, those are the dates. So that would be the same.
Okay.
So, so is the date of April twenty-first for budget finalization, that's our second meeting in April? That, is that an accurate date, that we have enough time for the budget referendum that's on May twelfth? Okay, so we're not in violation of anything in the charter or posting notices. You ran that by Lisa? So I'd like to make a motion for the Town Council Budget Session Schedule. That'll be March third at our regular council meeting is the town budget information. On Tuesday, March seventeenth, we'll delete the Tuesday, March tenth Operational and Capital Budget Section. The seventeenth stays as is, the twenty-fifth stays as is. We'll add Tuesday, March thirty-first.
Is that, excuse me, is that the twenty-fifth or twenty-fourth?
I'm sorry, twenty-fourth. The thirty-first will be Police, Fire, Public Works. And the rest of the public hearing and budget deliberations will stay as stated. The only thing, Mike, isn't March twenty-fourth, isn't that the Park and Rec, that's a regular night for their monthly meeting? Is the twenty-fourth correct, isn't, they're the fourth?
Fourth Tuesday.
Tuesday. So we either move them to the thirty-first and move another department up in there, or we just block the blocks, if you want to keep those blocks the way they are. Let's see, I just don't want it, because it, when they have to change their regular meetings, then that becomes a special meeting for them.
Why don't we just flip those?
Those three?
Those three, flip them.
Yeah, so March twenty-fourth will be Police, Fire, Public Works. March thirty-first will be Board of Ed, Library, Parks and Rec.
Got to make the change on the attached Department Heads' proposed budget schedule.
That's the next item, so.
Yeah.
So we have to do, so this motion is for the Town Council, is a, the Town Council one, and then the next item. So that's the motion for Town Council.
I'll second that one, you do the Town Council one separate, right?
Well, this is Town Council, Department Heads is separate, because it's a separate agenda.
Yeah, there are going to be several motions.
Okay, so I'll second that motion on the Town Council.
Motion made by Council Angeloni, seconded by Council Diamond. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Viglione?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Duddy?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Goad?
Yes.
Council Paternoster?
Yes.
And Council Plicia?
Yes.
All right, next is Department Heads' proposed budget schedule for year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, so the changes we made in March on the Town Council will be transferred over to the Department Heads. And then we're going to eliminate the Wednesday, Thursday, April first and second. And we're going to change the April seventh, eight budget workshop dates to read April eighth and ninth.
Is that your motion?
Well, my other question to Mike is, why wouldn't you include the other dates that we have for budget deliberations, the fourteenth and budget finalization to the Department Head?
Yeah, we'll add those in. If you want to put that in, yeah, we'll add those.
No, that's, no, not the fourteenth.
And the twenty-first, from the Town Council onto the budget, onto the Department Heads. So that's my motion.
I need, I need a second.
Second.
Motion made by Council Angeloni, seconded by Council Diamond. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Viglione?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Duddy?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Goad?
Yes.
Council Paternoster?
Yes.
Council Plicia?
Yes.
Next is the grant, grant list for two thousand nineteen.
The net taxable grant list increased by one point one one percent, or a little over fourteen million dollars. If you factor in last year's BIA, the actual increase is actually one point one three percent. For comparison purposes, the Milton Assessor surveyed surrounding towns to see what their grant list increase or decrease was. The median increase, or median change was an increase of point nine two percent. The smallest change was a negative one-tenth of one percent, and the largest increase was almost ten percent. And I guess you can guess what town that was. North Haven. Amazon, the Amazon facility added over two hundred and twenty million dollars to, to the grant list, which is absolutely incredible. Speaking of grant list, I hope you don't mind me saying so, but since, since I started here, um, the, our office has, has added one point six billion dollars of revenue to the grant list. And the reason why I, I say this is because what I am most happy about is that we only have given back forty thousand dollars in appeals. So my point is that whatever number I, I give you guys for, for budgetary reasons is, is pretty solid. A couple stats. The real property increase was due to revisiting income data for Evergreen Woods and Huntingwell. And also there were twelve new houses constructed prior to ten one nineteen. Personal property increase was due for, was due for changing the methodology from the cost approach to the income approach for cell towers and telecom companies. Usually, for example, telecom companies will render their personal property declaration using the cost method. And they report what the steel cost them and how much it put to construct the tower. But it's, it's, I think, the income approach is more reflective of value. It's, it's, it reflects what that site generates in income. And that capitalized becomes what I consider the value for the property. A side note that I met with our evaluation coordinator on Monday, and next month, the notices for the data mailers are going out. Those are the notices which will tell you what we think you have in your house as far as number of bathrooms, number of bedrooms, air conditioning, heating, and so forth. And you have the packet in front of you, so there's a lot of detail in front of you, so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer it.
So on the personal property, which has a net increase of the three point seven million, which is where you changed the methodology, is this a more common form of methodology used by all towns, or does this open us up for?
No, it's a, the assessor, the assessor should use, and appraisers follow the same rule of thumb. We have to take into consideration all three methods of evaluation, sales approach, cost approach, income approach. It's a valid methodology, and it's commonly used for income producing properties like billboards, cell towers, that kind of thing.
So the, the change, that, so this, you just changed it for this year prior to this, where you're using a different method?
Cost approach.
Okay.
Correct. It's a common methodology. It's more reflective of the value of that kind of property.
Okay.
Any other questions or?
You said when you started, if, if we looked at it based on last year's BIA or what?
Yeah, I provided you with number last year, and after I signed the grant list, taxpayer. Yeah, I provided you a number last year, and after I signed the grant list, taxpayers had the opportunity to appeal and reassess value. So we was lower by a couple hundred thousand, a couple hundred thousand dollars last year, which increased the gap between last year's net grant list after BAA and this year's grant list, net taxable grant list.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next, next we have the reappropriation of 2019, 2020 capital project funds for radio communication system.
I would, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to mention that at the combined meeting of the Police Commission and the Fire Commission, the Police Commission made a motion to allocate up to $100,000 to hire a consultant to work with both chiefs to conduct a study and plan for the North Ramford Communication System, along with overall fix and costs. And that's why this item is on the agenda, because what they're asking us for is a reappropriation of the capital project funds that were originally for satellite communication. I think that it was obvious by the number of people at the meeting that there is a very strong concern among many folks that we need to look at the communication system, but in order to do it, you really have to bring an outside person in, somebody impartial who can look at the system, work with the two chiefs, see what design has to be done, what costs there are in terms of equipment, in order to really do a good job once and for all with our communication system. I think there are, there are many concerns among folks on both commissions and also on the town council.
So I have a question for Anthony. So do we have to reappropriate the money before we go out and do bid?
Yeah, the adopted CIP identifies for the transmitter site, so I think it'd be cleaner to reappropriate that money towards its new purpose.
But, so the concern I have with that is, if we take all $100,000 and put it over into that, and if the bids come in at $40,000, $50,000, and now we have $50,000 left for the consultant, and the consultant comes up and says, okay, we have $50,000 left, and here's how you should use that money to start the program, now we have to reappropriate back to capital for the radio, why can't we just put it out to bid, and at the time when we see what our bid's going to be, reappropriate the money over to the bid?
That could certainly work. That could certainly, but either, either way, you're not going to do the site identified in the budget. So to go back to your scenario, if you say, okay, $40,000 to the consultant, and he puts 60 towards this new system, it's going to be a whole new capital project as well, so it's not going to be the identified project either way.
Correct.
We're not, we're not doing that site, we'll cast site regardless.
Well, that's the recommendation, which is fine. I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
Right.
One of the issues I have a problem with is saying, okay, we're going to take $50,000, so now you've kind of locked in a price for a consultant.
Right.
And, you know, maybe they would have come in at $25,000 or $30,000, but they know you have 50 allocated to them.
Sure. Now, you could, you could do it after, after the fact.
Is that we go out to bid, and then?
Whatever it is, it is.
Once we have the bids, then we can allocate the money for it.
That certainly works. Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
So what you're saying is we really could go out?
We don't have to set a, what we're saying is we don't have to set a dollar figure on the allocation.
Well, you don't want to?
You also say we don't have to reallocate from what it was originally in there.
Oh, not right now, not until the bids come in.
Once the bids come in, then we just move the money.
So if the bids, whatever the bid comes in, whatever we end up accepting, then it's the money at that time.
So do we have to vote to do a bid at this point, or no?
No, we'll just table it.
Well, we don't have to make, we don't have to reappropriate the funds.
No, but don't we have to prove a bid?
Well, that's the next item, is to review and discuss.
We can table it, we can table this item, we can table this item till we get a, a cost.
Yeah. That way you don't telegraph it when you go out there, as Rose was saying.
Correct.
And, and again, the, the next item, I put on anticipation that you, you know, we might have something, but I believe you want to hear from the, from the chief or the commission with respect to their work. I don't think, it's, it's not ready and not complete unless, you know, you want to just go ahead and authorize. Typically, you, you want a document that we, that's what we've been doing with bids and RFPs, so I think you probably want to hear where them, from them, where they are in the process. I, I just put anticipation, hoping that it would be ready, but I don't think it is.
The two, the fire chief and the police chief have been working hand in hand, it's a very small pool, as everybody was there at the meeting, most of the council members were there. If you slow this process down anymore, we have?
We aren't slowing it down.
They're actually working hand in hand with a consultant, there's only one of them that they can really work with, that's going to give a broad.
We still have to do a bid, though.
I know, but we still don't even have a basis to even do a bid, because one was pulled up from the town of North Haven, and it has nothing to do with this town. It doesn't involve schools, it doesn't involve security. The $100,000, if there was any money left over, the fire department's in need of batteries and some portable radios, we were going to try to put a Band-Aid on what we can to at least get them operational. Right now, between Public Works, Police, and Fire, they're all vulnerable.
Right, and we're not, we're not preventing that.
But we still got to go back to the council, so how do, how do you want to do the bid process, like?
Well, we have, we have to have a bid document, we have to have something drawn up, and if, if the Police and Fire Commission and chiefs are working on this, that's the next item, is we can appoint a committee to have you guys develop an RFP.
It's going to s-
That comes back to the council for final approval to go out.
If that's the way you want to go, but right now, they don't even, they have to go and get the consultant, hire the consultant to come up with the RFP, to find out what we need.
No, we have to, we have to go out to bid, I mean, because it's over $7,500, we have to go out to bid.
Okay.
For consultants.
Are you good with that?
But you have to, you have to draw, but?
Hang on, they would like to, so, so yeah, like, like Commissioner said, there was, there was some, there was a draft that was distributed, that there were some issues with that, that included some things that we didn't, the chief and I didn't necessarily want in the request for a quote. One of the points that Marie, Councilor Diamond spoke about was the idea that we want a vendor that is going to be manufacturer neutral, we don't want a supplier, we want somebody that's going to give us the right information. So the chief and I have been working on it, I think we're pretty close, so.
On the RFP?
Yes.
Specs? Okay, then my next.
Yes, so, so we'll get that to you at the next meeting, we should have that ready for you, it just wasn't ready for this meeting. But again, the importance of not, not involving a vendor is important to the chief and I, because we don't want somebody that's got a horse in the race to try to sell us.
I think we all agree with that.
A used car, if you will.
Yeah.
But there was, there was other corrections that had to be, had to be made for this, and we couldn't, it was, I think it was distributed, what's the date that you had to get the information out to the town council last Thursday?
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah, so it was distributed on Thursday, and by the time, by the time we got it, we just couldn't get it to you, so.
So, so do you, do you want your committee, your subcommittee to form the specs that will come back to be basically the two chiefs?
So, so it's the police and fire chief that's working on this project, and I have to ask the town council something. And I appreciate six in attendance at the joint commission meeting. This is a very specific and technical issue. This is not like building a house, this is not like buying a truck. Radio communications is so technical, beyond the realm of most reasonable unith individuals. So my question is, and I'm not sure if this town has done it, but in my previous experience in another municipality, it used professional services agreements on very technical and specific projects. So this is a very technical and specific project in which we don't want somebody from Virginia working on a project from North Ramford, that they never set foot in North Ramford, and did everything on a computer, looking on Google Maps about the specific town. So is it possible to be able to write a professional services agreement for the services in which we are seeking, as opposed to going to bid? A lot of municipalities do this, this is not foreign.
I guess I would defer to the attorney.
And I'd have to defer, I'd have to look into that.
Okay. I, I think we're, I mean, I threw it on there as, as an RQ, RFP versus a bid, more like the line you're, you're talking about, professional services of saying it's a request for qualification and proposal, that you then, depending on what you write in your, in your spec, but write it that way, and I think, you know, we'll get some more feedback from the legal side. But I, I see where you're going with, with, like, like legal services, professional services versus a bid, because it's, it is sensitive in terms of the security matter, so I think we can, I think we can get there. I'm hoping the answer is yeah, and that we can get there, but just, we'll need to review.
The base of this class of technical advisor, so to speak, is extremely, extremely limited in Connecticut. There may be one, maybe two, that can fulfill this type of obligation for us.
All right, well, and that's why on a request for qualifications and proposals, we have more leeway than a bid. On a bid, it's generally the lowest, you know?
That's, that's making the assumption that it's over $7,500, correct, that it would go out to bid, so let's, let's say we get, we're just making this assumption. So let's say we get quotes back underneath, under $7,500, so what's?
That would be wonderful, because then we would have, we would have a lot more left to do other things with.
So, so what's the process, does that?
Just, you need a couple quotes.
Right.
You need a couple quotes.
Well, yeah, under the policy you have?
Technically, by our charter, you need three quotes.
Yeah, you need three, but if you can't get three to respond, and you only get two to respond, then just showing the, the document that you're, you're out there to, and trying to get three quotes, you may not get if there's only one or two players in the field.
So if 160, we got like 166 towns in Connecticut, something like that?
169.
169.
If each town was doing this same project, there would only be two cons, two consultants?
You'd be surprised, it's not a very, not a very flooded field, we've been kind of looking around, seeing what's out there, and there's, there's really not much out there. There's a lot of vendors that'll try to sell you their product, but as far as somebody that's independent, that's, that's, you know, vendor, or installer, and manufacturer neutral, I'm not quite sure we're going to find a lot of people. I mean, we could, we could call up a, you know, get a Motorola in here and put in a quote for it, or a tactical, or whatever, radio system vendor or installer is out there, and they're going to try to sell you, you know, sell you, sell you their product or the used car.
Do we know what we need?
That's the whole problem, we don't, and that's why we want somebody that's, that's vendor and manufacturer neutral, somebody that could lead us in the right direction. I think it's, that's the first half of it.
Do we know what issues we have?
Yeah, we can't talk on the radios in some places, it's, there's a lot of dead spots with the radios, more so for the fire department than the police department. A lot of issues, including penetration in buildings, for example, North Rice Pavilion, you can't get into that, or you can't talk out of it. Some of the schools, we have issues with the radio communications. Any structure that is either brick or metal, we have those, those communication problems. Also, when you start to get to the town borders, it's, it's marginal. I know that a couple weeks ago, some of our officers were calling on cell phones from the top of CO Road, because they couldn't communicate with dispatch. When you get out just beyond, I'd say the area of Country Peyton Hardware on Route 80, going towards Guilford, that's, that's kind of a dead zone. Up in Durham, the Durham line, North Durham line, there's, there's problems up there also, as well as the East Haven Town Line. And really, as soon as you get out of the town, there's really no communicate, we could hear what's going on, but we can't talk back.
So what's, what do we expect from the consultant?
So, so we're looking to get three perspectives. We have a system now, is it worth keeping the system, and does it need enhancements to maintain that 95% reliability by way of portals in a building? Do we need to take our system and put a new system in, or do we need to look at what the state's options are with the state's communication system? And, and it all depends upon, you know, I think what we're looking for from a vendor is, is to kind of give us a roadmap of, I mean, from a consultant, sorry, a kind of roadmap is to which way we should really go with it, without having that, that vendor trying to sell us something, and not really point us in the right direction, if you will. You know, there's, there's the state option, getting on the state backbone, or the state core, as they call it, but that might require build outs on, on the other side of it, we'd still have to maintain infrastructure to make the radio system, you know, 95% portable communications, not remotely portable communications. So, so really, it's, like the, the chief said, you know, this isn't something that you go to Best Buy and buy off the shelf, these are very intricate systems that, that need engineering, you know, and, and we don't know, they might even come back and say, you know what, you know, the option is, is to keep the, the system that you have and, and upgrade it. The problem with that, excuse me, the problem with that is, is that we're currently on an analog system, which is, it's, it's old technology. I know that the, the boxes or the radios, if you will, were purchased in 2005, maybe between 09 and 12. 09 and 12, okay, I don't, I don't have all the background, but they, they might be newer boxes, but the technology, analog radio systems, I, you know, I could safely guess it goes back to, you know, the 40s or even earlier.
So once, so just, hold on a second, so once it's identified what's going, what you think's going to work, or what should work, and, and the installation goes through, who's responsible for it? In regards to, it's installed, who checks the box off, says it's installed properly?
Is it, so that's the second half of what we're?
No, no, I know, I know, I'm, I'm jumped, I know I'm jumping ahead, but I'm just asking the question.
So the, the second half of it is, is that, that if, you know, I would ask the town council to possibly do a bid waiver, to possibly keep on that same person that, that pointed us in the right direction, that we chose to oversee the project.
That, that's what I was getting at, see, who, who was, who thought would be responsible for it, you know?
You know, I, I'm learning a lot about radios as we, as we go along, you, you could put in something and tell me it's X, Y, and Z, and I wouldn't know the difference, and that's why I think it would be important to have a consultant on the second side of it, not only to control costs, but quality assurance, to make sure that the, the building's done correctly.
But why couldn't we just put that in as an ad alternate in the, in the, in the specs that?
Right, so if phase one, two, and three, the result, we can dovetail a project management into it.
Correct, yes.
Don't you also want someone that really knows the topography of this town, the issues that you have with the topography? Wouldn't that be part of it, too?
Well, that would, that would be part of the study, absolutely, and that, that's what would determine which direction we would go in. You know, the, the state system, you know, was actually built for Connecticut State Police. It might be terrific on 95, 91, 395, but out in the suburbs, you, you might experience problems where you have to, particularly with the, the topography that we have.
Right.
Where you would have to build up infrastructure that the town would be responsible for. So, you know, I'm, I'm not a radio expert, so that's, that's why I think that we need, we need a consultant. The chief isn't a radio expert, but he's, he's very well, I have a first.
A little bit of knowledge, as opposed to?
To make it dangerous, yeah. Right. So.
What would the title of this person be? Like, what, what is their actual title, like their expertise, their profession, like what is their, the title?
Their, their, Radio System Consultants.
Thank you.
So you think you might have the RFP ready for the next meeting, is that what you said?
I think we're pretty good right here, I have some of the, the changes on it already. The chief and I looked it over, we went back and forth. The only, the only reason why you don't have it tonight is because the draft was generated last Thursday, Thursday afternoon, by the time we got it, we, we didn't get a chance to sit down together and, and review it.
Well, once you get it to us, we legally just got to make sure it's valid through our town attorney. our town attorney, and then it'll be set to go.
Should be forward, should be forward.
Then it'll be going to, yeah, it'll go to Mike, to the town manager, and then he'll get it to the town attorney, and the purchase and assistant to write it up, to send it out, so it shouldn't take long, once, once you get the-
You could probably have it to him.
...specifications.
Yeah, okay.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna make a motion to table item thirteen D, which is the reappropriation of the two thousand nineteen, twenty capital project funds for the radio communication system.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Angeloni and seconded by Councilor Duty. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Mayor DeGleon?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Duty?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen?
Yes.
Councilor Code?
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster?
Yes.
Councilor Blichia?
Yes.
Thirteen, thirteen E, we could leave open until that comes back, I mean...
Yeah, it just goes up to unfinished business.
Yeah.
We'll just keep it on the agenda. And thirteen E is the whole discussion we just had with the two chiefs.
Do you want a motion to table that as well, and we just bring it back?
No, that, that can just stay on, put it on unfinished business.
Okay.
Okay, next is citizen statements and petitions.
I understand, uh, preference of the format, I was actually a little surprised it was gonna be on the agenda with Mr. Marino not, not here tonight, 'cause he's the one that made all the suggestions, but that being said, I, I understand the, I believe the rules of conduct and stuff, but I, I noticed the, the Councilor Duty was quick to table it. Now, I don't know if that was because we had some good dialogue before that, I thought I heard that he didn't have some notes, but, so what I'm asking is, and this is the second time this happened, if someone wants to table something, and I can't control that, I can't control the rules, I think, I'm asking you to be a little more considerate to the other people on the council, because when you table it right off the bat, you're controlling the whole council, nobody can say anything else, because once you've tabled something and give a reason for it, for whatever reason, you're in control. And I say that because, let's go back a couple of months, while we were trying to get that Blake thing done, and it was tabled pretty quick after that, once the zoning officer, we found out he wasn't available for the meeting, and that was all well and good. At that time, we had three new councils who never spoke, and here we are, two months later, and it still hasn't spoken. And by the way, I understood the CEO was coming back mid-January, is what's going on with that? So, I'm hearing crickets, so I guess he's not back.
No.
We should be getting this, Mr. Mayor, we should be getting this Blake thing out of the way.
I, I know, I, I agree, I don't know when he's coming back, I guess that's, that's personal, he was out, check.
Okay, now, that's fine.
The Blake, the Blake ordinance isn't going away, it's, it's coming up.
Oh, no, it's not.
We're just waiting for his, his legal and his opinion on it, as what he feels he could work with, and how he could work with it, and who, you know, there's too many people that had authority in there, and it's, it just wouldn't work.
Oh, he already windled that down.
Yeah, well, we're wait, we're waiting for his opinion on that.
The, the, the whole reason with the, that it was tabled was based on the suggestion from the Blake Committee, is that you wanted us to hear from the zoning enforcement officer.
Exactly.
So, we haven't had that opportunity to do that, because unfortunately, he went out on leave. So, that's the whole reason it was tabled, but he's not back yet.
But he was, he was supposed to be back mid-January, we're into February now, and...
Well, if he's not back, there's nothing we can do about that.
We can't drag him in here.
We don't control that.
Yeah, and I, I'll get an update for you.
Yeah, I wanna continue with Bill, I don't wanna drop it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not dropped.
And secondly, I have a few concerns, you know, and I did make notes, but I, I came right from work instead of going home, so I didn't have a chance to get my notes today, but I have concerns, the same as George did, to limit public speaking, I have cons, I have a few other concerns that I, that I don't really like, I, I'd rather have a voice vote than a consent vote. I'm not in favor of the consent agenda at all, I feel we're doing it good the way we are now, and that was my opinion that I had before, so, you know, I don't know if I'm a yes or a no yet on the consent agenda.
I'm not questioning you so much as I'm questioning the procedure, meaning, I mean, you have to agree, one person, if they don't wanna talk about it for the night, all they have to do is say, for whatever reason, I tabled it, and nobody else talks, so...
Bill, would you rather make a rushed decision that we regret?
No, no, I'm not getting that over in the head.
Or would you rather table it and make it a good educated decision?
The man was out on leave, I'm just making a simple statement.
No, I know, but-
All you have to do is tell me he's not back yet, and that's what I accept. Nobody was offering it, manager's report, he didn't offer that the CEO's not back and we'll have to keep it tabled, it wasn't brought up, so I brought it up, so now I know my answer, he's not back yet.
If somebody wants a table, they move the table, and the entire council votes on it. Mike didn't make the decision by himself to table.
No, but there's no more discussion, do I understand, once he moves the table-
We, we vote on that motion.
And so many seconds, there, there's no more discussion.
We could've voted that table down, and-
What's that?
We could've voted the table down, and we would've discussed it. And wanna move forward with it, but he asked- And then I would've had to yell at everybody. As a combination, that'd be tabled.
Well, see, there it goes, right there.
What did he say?
I guess I'm not understanding the procedure, but it just sounds like, thank you.
Well, anytime there's a vote, doesn't the mayor ask it for discussion?
Right.
So, there's always, there's always the option.
Well, not according to the rules, now, once it, it's a mo, motion to table, and it's seconded, I guess, that's the key word, and here's the attorney, right?
So, no, I think if there is a motion to table, and there is an opportunity for discussion, if everybody votes down, votes to approve the motion to table, then it's tabled, but I, I, I think that you're not, it's not accurate that there isn't an opportunity to discuss, it's not accurate that one person can simply shut down an issue on the agenda.
I'm not actually saying it that way, I'm seeing, it seems to, I'm gonna have to go back and read the rulebook, sorry, folks.
I could've come up earlier, but I was trying to spread the comments out, so we didn't slow the meeting down, because I know that's what you're trying to do with the new agenda. How about the old saying, if you go south with your mouth, the gavel will travel? It's Robert's Rules, this man here can take back any further progress at that moment if he feels the meeting's out of control, is that right? Robert's Rules, is this what we operate under here?
So, technically, if there's disruption, then yes.
Okay, well, if you, you know, taking too long to talk might be a disruption, so again, like Mike says, we've been here, it isn't a problem, I'm, I'm really not terribly upset with the agenda, it's worked fine. I think sometimes, if we go too far to change something, it's gonna hurt us in the long run. We've got more important things to do in this town, we've gotta move forward, we've gotta survive this Connecticut, the state of Connecticut government that's gonna tax us to death with tolls, but I won't go into that. So, again, I'll, I can give you an example of tabled, when we were trying to form the Agriculture Commission, we were tabled, we were cement tabled, so it took quite a bit to get that untabled, so there is just a week or two tabling, and then there's the political tabling, and if you sit here long enough, you know the difference. You guys are doing a great job, the new guys are kicking in, so again, maybe we just should sit back, not go crazy about this, and get back to town business. Thanks.
Thank you.
We just had one quick question that's just on coming up, is there a time limit, which were, time of the essence was being brought up, that we had to get this in the capital budget within the next ten days, is that true or not, or is it?
You don't have to get anything in the capital budget, it's, the money's in the capital budget under another line item, so once the request for proposal-
So, there's no timeline on it?
That, we'll just move that.
You mean the fu, he means the funding for the whole project?
Down, down the road, the whole, the whole project.
No, not the whole proposal, just this particular, just the, to hire the consultant.
And, no, there's no, there's no, there's no time framing.
So, we have, they have some time, so, getting back to before, we were just speeding things up to try to get it to a point, we were under the impression we only had ten days to get this moved from the capital, till we have more time.
Not, that I'm aware of, that there's only ten days, right?
No, no.
Thank you.
And I, going back to what Mike said, how would that, how would that impact the, the total project, is there a time lim, limit for that? So, if we're gonna go out for a request for quote, then a request to purchase, is there a time limit?
Well, if we, if we have to get it into the budget for next year-
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the question.
Into the capital budget for next year-
That's the question.
We would need to know the answer before we finalize the budget, and the last date of that is April twenty-first, to get it into the capital for next year.
Gotcha, okay.
That's why you gotta get that RFP done.
Tomorrow, coming tomorrow, thank you.
Thanks.
So, that's not a hundred percent true, because the capital gets approved subsequently, so if this spills into April, May, June, get final numbers for the capital, I think you said it, that gets approved and, and after the fact, so...
But if we're gonna, if it's going to affect mill-
It's a final taxation.
Yeah, if it's gonna affect the mill rate.
If it's a bond project, that's had no impact on the mill rate.
But we don't, but we wouldn't know that if we don't have the numbers.
Correct, correct.
Right, so if we, if we have no numbers by April twenty-first at all, as to what the cost is, then we can't get it, if we wanna use some of fund balance to pay the initial part of it, and if we're gonna bond the rest, we wouldn't know that, so we wouldn't be able to do fund balance, correct?
Correct.
If we don't have it by April twenty-first.
That's correct.
So, if we get it after April twenty-first, everything would have to be bonded-
Correct.
-if we wanted to start the project, but that might not be the route that, that the council wants to go, to bond, depending on the cost of the project, which-
Correct.
If we don't know the cost of the project, we couldn't allocate any funds by April twenty-first if we don't know that cost, then we're kinda forced to do bonding, unless we make some kind of motion later on, which I don't know if we can or not. Okay, we can't, so, so that's why, personally, I would not wanted to say, okay, we're gonna bond the whole thing if you don't have numbers by April twenty-first, because I don't know what that number's gonna be. If it's a half a million dollars, we might decide, no, we're not gonna bond that money, because we can take it out of general fund. If it's two million dollars, that's a different story. Or if there's phases, that Phase One might be a half a million, Phase Two might be a million, and Phase Three might be another million dollars, that we can spread it out, that would all be valuable information to know before April twenty-first, when we have to set the budget, and the timeline of what this is. So, you know, time is of the essence in some regards to get it into the budget process, so that we know what our options are, or what they're proposing as options, so we have time to discuss that, and how it's gonna be funded. If it's, if we don't have anything by April twenty-first, then that kinda backs us up a little bit, and kinda forces us to bond it if we have to go out immediately to do some of this stuff. So, that's, in my opinion, that's why time is of the essence, but not necessarily ten days.
I told you, but, and then we were, we didn't know that's what we were gonna do.
So, if we, if we have it by the, that we can approve the RFQP by the next council meeting, which is, which is February eighteen-
We don't have it by tomorrow, before noon.
But then, yeah, but we can't take action until the eighteen, so...
Well, we're just having it there.
So, but the town attorney has to review it, so, and stuff before we get it, which is fine.
Purchase and agent has to type it.
So, is that clarified?
Yeah, thank you, thank you for your time.
Still on citizen statements? We're gonna move into executive session after a five-minute break.
I move to, you move to executive session?
You gotta move into executive session?
Don't I have to have a motion?
Yes.
I move, we do. Yeah, you do. Seconded by?
For, for, Marie, for, what's it for?
What's the executive?
Oh, sorry, it's for personnel matters.
Who's included, Marie?
Town manager.
Town manager?
Thank you.
The chairman as well?